Yeah.
Good evening. Today is Monday, October 27th, and we are here for the Design Review Commission meeting. This is our regular meeting, and I am now calling the meeting to order. And our Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Commissioner Lopez.
All right, please. And over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can have our roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Chang?
President.
Thank you. Commissioner Two is absent. Vice Chair Sealow is absent. Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Thank you. Chair Romo?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel Three and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. Number one, public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Design Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Design Review Commission, please fill out a speaker card that is available on the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the recording secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item number two, we have a new staff member. We have a Community Development Director, David Sanchez.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ms. Chair, I'm just excited to be here. My name's David Sanchez. I've spent significant time working in the region at the city of Pasadena. I most recently worked at the city of Camarillo, and I'm really excited to serve alongside of members of this Commission and our very capable staff.
Great. Thank you. I hope we get to work together and work to improve and update some things. I have some ideas.
Love to hear them. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to item number three, Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and recommendations, will be approved in one motion unless a member of the Design Review Commission or public requests separate discussion. Commissioner Chang, do you have any items you want to pull?
Uh, no, I do not.
Commissioner Lopez, do you have any items to pull?
I do not, no.
Have we received any comments from the public to pull any item?
No, ma'am.
Great. Then if I can get a motion, we have our minutes from September 22nd, 2025. That is the only thing on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Two is absent. Vice Chair Sealow is absent. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you. And then Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three As, motion passes.
Thank you. Now we have our public hearing, and Samantha will lead us to this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Design Review Commission. There are three public hearing items this evening to be considered by the Commission. Copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrilcity.com, and also on the table that is by the entrance. Anyone wishing to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary, who is Damian this evening, and speakers will be called up one by one during the public hearing portion of the item. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. For the, for each item, tonight's staff will provide a brief summary of the staff report, followed by a presentation or comments from the applicant team, and then the public hearing will be open. After public comments, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose, and prior to the close of the hearing, the Commission may ask questions of the applicant's staff or city architect. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. At this time, staff is ready to present item A.
Thank you. Item A is 1975 through 1985 South Delmar Avenue and 116 Glendon Way, planning case number PPD 25-009, precise plan of design. The applicant is Tyler Kelly Architects. And Christine?
Thank you, Chair. The project site is located on the west side of Delmar Avenue, between West Glendon Way to the north and West Saxon Avenue to the south. The site consists of three parcels totaling a little over 40,000 square feet. The site is zoned MUCR within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area with a general plan land use designation of commercial specific plan. The proposed project complies with all of the development standards for the MUCR zone, with the exception of the floor air ratio and the height, which were two concessions under the state density bonus law, in exchange for providing 10% affordable housing units within the project. These are the original project renderings, which show the contemporary architectural style of the new building. The DRC previously approved this project on October 23rd, 2023. On January 7th, 2025, there was an administrative one year time extension that was granted by the Community Development Director, which created a new expiration for the PPD of November 7th, 2025. And at this time, the applicant is requesting a one-year time extension for the PPD. They originally submitted for plan check back in March of 2024, and they just came across some unexpected delays while resolving some of the complex corrections from both Southern California Edison and just various city departments. I believe price of labor and materials was also a factor, which I'm told has been resolved since. And I guess they're also working on the last leg of the general contractor bidding process as they secure loan approval to fund the project. In terms of environmental review, in 2023, the project was reviewed for compliance with California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. It was determined that the project is exempt per Guideline Section 15332, which is a Class 32 infill development exemption. Technical studies were prepared by a city-selected environmental consultant, Kimberly Horn, and there have been no changes to the approved project, and nor are any proposed at this time. So the time extension request is not subject to any additional environmental review. The public notice for this request was post, the agenda was posted at City Hall, Post Office, and the Public Library, and also advertised in the San Gabriel Sun newspaper on October 16th. With that, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution approving planning case number PPD 25-009 for a one-year time extension of PPD 23-003 for a five-story mixed-use development at 1975 to 1985 South Delmar Avenue and 116 Glendon Way, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang, do you have any questions?
Yeah, a question for staff. Is two years the maximum they can request for extension on the entitlement process, or is more?
Meaning the one-year administrative extension they have already received?
Correct.
And the one-year extension proposed tonight? Yes.
So this is it. If we approve it, it'll be good for one additional year?
Correct.
All right. Would you happen to know what process are they at at this time, or is we wait for the applicant to answer the question?
I believe they're pretty much almost complete with the plan check process. I think there are very minor corrections last issued, so they're pretty much done with that. And they're working on their general contractor bidding process, is what I'm told.
Wonderful. Appreciate that, because I want to make sure that the applicant understands that time limit, and so they can budget the time accordingly. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
The applicant is present tonight.
Evening. Thank you for hearing this. My name is Rob Tyler with Tyler and Kelly Architecture. You know, a lot has changed in the, in the last year, in the kind of funding and construction cost landscape, as you can imagine. And Plan Check also seems, seems to take a long time. You know, we're in round five. I think we've got two small corrections left. But, you know, the first set is, you might imagine, for a project this size, is several hundred corrections involving several of your outside consultants, and it just takes a while to receive them and then fed, you know, filter through the, those that might affect the engineering disciplines, and then distribute to the engineering disciplines. So the turnaround time is, is longer than it takes. And frankly, for projects like this, we're, we're seeing Plan Checks exceeding a year almost universally. And we're also, as mentioned, looking for the best possible funding. We'd like to see the project go through without, you know, a bunch of value engineering or downgrades in design that'll come back again to you. So anyway, we appreciate staff, staff's help with this, and hope that you will grant our extension. Any questions?
Commissioner Chang?
I guess you heard my question earlier. Are you months away from possibly at least getting a first part of the permit? Because you want to make sure you got the entitlement established so that you do not face the same issue come next year, this month?
Yes, there's, there are literally only, yes, I'm fully aware of it. There are literally only three corrections in the last round. One has to do with a question on the fire rating of an exit stair, and the other has to do with the timing and issuance of, at least requested by the city. I think Christine and I talked about it before, but we have to break out a shoring permit, even though the shoring plans have been reviewed and the engineering's been done, and it's in our set. There's a kind of an administrative question as to like, which is the, you know, carton, which is the horse here. So we'll work with staff on that, but there is literally no additional work, other than what I just mentioned, for the design team to do.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure your client understand what they're facing, and, and the clock will keep ticking. And so you have to plan it correctly.
Clearly, we understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions. Thank you.
So in your best estimate, right now, when do you think your project will be ready?
Well, I think the, the project will be RTI, and it can be RTI depending on how long the reviewers take to look at the last two corrections. But from my point of view, it could be, there's two parts to it. So there's the bidding funding part of it, and then there's the design part of it. So the design part is very straightforward. The bidding funding, you know, financing part of it is a little trickier, and I think it's probably, you know, at least six months away to, to get to the end of the bidding funding discussion.
All right. And I think interest rates will be a little lower, so that might-
We're hoping a lot of things would improve, but, you know, fingers crossed.
Yes. Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So at this time, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. It is now 6:44, and the time for public comment is now closed, and our commissions, commissioners will deliberate the item. Commissioner Chang, I'll start with you.
Yeah, it's been a challenging time for the last couple of years since COVID, and then we got the, a lot of uncertainty, and some of the major projects are having some challenges. So this is a great project. We'd like to see it happen. So I think the city would like to encourage the developer and help them to, to see to it happen. So I have no issue approving the extension for this one last time.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
I like have no issue extending the, the timeframe.
I'd like to just reiterate what you said. These are challenging times, and with so many things unknown for any development projects, we have reviewed several projects that have not broken ground. And that's, that's something, it's not just for this project, but there are other several projects. I do think it would be a good gateway for a city because it's there off the freeway, and it presents the city in a very positive light. And so I'm also want to try to see to get if we can extend this for a year, and hopefully within six months or plus time, they'll, they'll have some groundbreaking. That will be a big, big difference there. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve planning case number PPD 25-009, precise plan of design, time extension per staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Two is absent. Commissioner, Vice Chair Sealow is absent. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three As, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, is there a score report?
Still four-two.
All right, thank you. All right. We go to our next item, B 301 East Sunset Street, planning case number SPR 24038, site plan review, applicant Brian Chen. And Marlon, he'll be doing our presentation.
Good evening, Chair Romo and members of the Design Review Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a site plan review to allow for the construction of a new two-story, single-family home located at 301 East Sunset Avenue, planning case number SPR 25-012. The subject property measures 7,500 square feet and is currently vacant, with the exception of a concrete pad. Building permit records indicate that the property was previously developed with a commercial building, most recently occupied by Leo's Market. A demolition permit was issued in October of 1997. The property has remained undeveloped since that time. The proposed project includes the construction of a new single-family home and an attached two-story accessory dwelling unit. The property is located on the northeast corner of East Sunset Avenue and South Euclid Avenue. The project site is zoned R1 for single-family residences and has, uh, single-family homes directly to the north, south, west, and east. The project before you tonight is for a new two-story, single-family home with an attached garage. The single-family home will measure a total of 2,289 square feet with a 100, excuse me, 1,154 square foot ground floor and a 1,061 square foot second floor. The application for a new single-family home has been reviewed by staff, the city architect, and landscape architect for completeness and consistency with the single-family residential design guidelines. The city architect has found the design of the proposed home to be inconsistent with the design guidelines, citing excessive paving, a lack of detail and substance, and a large second-story massing inconsistent with the surrounding homes. The project applicant has expressed concern over time delays and has requested their application be heard by the Design Review Commission as proposed. Three letters from the applicant have been attached to this report. The proposed home is designed in a nondescript style, lacking defining characteristics of any architectural style. The home will be clad in a Santa Barbara stucco finish. The color material's information found on Sheet A 3.2 of Attachment B identifies the stucco as a beige color. However, the three-dimensional rendering shown here reflects a stark white color. Roofing material will be a clay tile and a slate gray range. The home will feature black windows, and the fascia board trim and window sill will be painted in a dark gray color to contrast the white stucco. A detailed landscape plan was not provided. However, some landscaping information has been shown on the site plan, found on Sheet C 1.1 of Attachment B. The project proposes to install a new landscaping on the project site. The front yard will feature a 20-foot-wide concrete area occupying 340 square feet of the front yard area. The front yard will also feature a new lawn area on both sides of the concrete area and two new 15-gallon pink trumpet trees. The street-side yard along Euclid Avenue will feature seven new strawberry trees, and the rear yard will be occupied entirely by a lawn. The proposal includes a large concrete area in the front yard of the home, inconsistent with Section 153.223D of the Municipal Code, which states the required front yard in any residential zone shall not be hard-surfaced or utilized for access or maneuvering purposes to any garage, carport, or parking space, other than for required driveway as provided in Section 153.221. The site plan identifies this area as a walkway. However, this paved area exceeds the allowable walkway width of 42 inches. It also is proposed, in addition to the driveway, providing access to the property from Euclid Avenue to the west. Section 153.353 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code requires a submittal of a neighborhood analysis of homes within a 300-foot radius around the project site. The analysis shall identify one- and two-story homes in the neighborhood. The neighborhood analysis identifies five properties with two single, uh, two single, excuse me, two-story, single-family residences within a 300-foot radius. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exempt per Guideline Section 15303, Class 3 for new construction. And on October 15th, 2025, a notice regarding the project was sent to properties within a 300-foot radius of the project site. Tonight's meeting agenda was posted at City Hall, the Post Office, and the Public Library, and the project was noticed in the October 15th, 2025 edition of the San Gabriel Sun. With that, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel denying planning case number SPR 25-012 for new two-story, single-family residence at 301 East Sunset Avenue. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Before I go to the commission comment, or questions to staff, I'd like to have Ron, if you can add a little insight on this project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one correction to what Marlon just said is that it, in the first submittal, it had an attached two-car garage.
Right.
In the subsequent submittals, that had been changed to an ADU, a two-story attached ADU. So we reviewed the first time, and many of the findings were, again, that the project is not in compliance with the design guidelines and several zoning elements. Primarily, the, well, first of all, it, it, the project's located in the Central San Gabriel Special Planning District, which is, just recently reaffirmed by the City Council as a special planning district. And as such, it requires additional scrutiny to maintain its, its historical precedence. And so new buildings built within the special planning district have to recognize the special quality, and that the building should be reflective of the context and materiality and scale of adjacent buildings. In particular, the design guidelines call for two-story buildings in a primarily one-story neighborhood to be quote-unquote gently inserted into the neighborhood, meaning that the second floor should be set back and that there's predominant character of a one-story home with a, a kind of a pop-up second story. The proposal, as you can see in their submittal, the entire project is front-loaded because they intend to build a second unit behind the, the home. They have not addressed what actually happens in that second rear portion of the lot, including a lack of landscaping. So I reviewed the first version, made, made many of these kind of comments, and then we got the second version, which had the ADU incorporated. And still, many of the, the elements were unaddressed or just ignored. And then Marlon and I had a telephone meeting with the group on March 14th, where we explained all of this, explained the importance of the Central San Gabriel Special Planning District, and outlined how they could incorporate ideas and textures and scale from adjacent homes. And the, the phone meeting seemed to be well-accepted, except the next submittal didn't do any of the things that we talked about. And then the third submittal, there, there wasn't even a change in the submittal. It was exactly the same as the second submittal. So the comments were continually ignored. And I, I think the same holds true for the city landscape architect. There's just many items that were not addressed or just ignored.
Thank you. Do you have any, Commissioner Chang, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if the planner has any direct contact with the applicant? Do they understand that the, the staff report, and why aren't they respecting some of these comments or help from the city architect and the city landscape architect? Before they come up, I want to hear your side of your recommendation from the staff.
Yeah, there, there has been communication with the applicant continuously throughout the, since the project was submitted. However, the, the applicant felt that they wanted to continue with the project as they proposed it and not address the comments. They, they thought the comments that the city architect was providing were very lengthy and not, not necessarily to their liking. They did provide letters making such statements that have been attached to the staff report as well.
Okay. So do they also understand that a denial meaning that the whole application is finished and they have to restart if they want to move forward? Have they understand that the possibility of a continuance, or, or there is no chance?
They, they understand that there is the possibility of continuance, but that the recommendation is to deny.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, quick question. Did, did they utter any, the applicant, any, any reasoning behind the way they wanted to move forward as opposed to implementing some of the recommendations to, I guess, to, to ease some of the concerns on the design?
None beyond that it was just their personal preference.
Thank you.
And then if you can, I know there's a separate historic preservation commission, but our design commission has not been versed in the special significance of this area. So if you can enlighten us on the significance, I, I think it's because this is where some of the oldest homes in San Gabriel are, that you can please enlighten me.
So my, my understanding of how the district function is, is actually fairly limited. It's, it's not exactly a historic district, similar to others that you see throughout the city that were recently, I believe, adopted by the City Council. This one is, is called the Central San Gabriel Planning District, which does not give specific, I think, character-defining characteristics, the way some of the other planning districts does. It's, it's a little bit more general in its, in its guidelines into introducing new homes. Simple, excuse me, similar to what Ron stated about second-story homes being introduced gently. Materials and features found in surrounding homes should be implemented in, in new homes, but not specific character-defining features in the way we see in some of the other areas throughout the city.
I drove around the neighborhood today, just so I can understand the part, you know, the site a little better. There is a mix of architectural styles there within the neighborhood and across the street. It's an old cinder block home. It's probably something that should be on the register because it's unique architectural design. It might even be Adobe, I'm not too sure. But there are some craftsman homes, and there's- I'm not too sure. But there are some craftsman homes and there's, there's just a mix of homes. And I think what we're trying to do is elevate neighborhoods. And this is an area that you can see, correct me if I'm wrong, as far as the demographics are concerned, but it's lower income households. Is that correct?
I don't have demographic data to, to support that. So, I wouldn't be able to confirm. The home styles do, do vary, like you mentioned, yes.
Yeah. See, in, in being a, a person who grew up in a poor neighborhood, I think it's important to elevate the neighborhood with good design. And I think that's something that behooves every project. And just because this is in one area where people may not come up and comment, like lots of people spoke at our September meeting and we had lots of comments, that we shouldn't respect the neighborhood. So, I, I, I think we need to definitely be able to understand what's being proposed here and why. Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could read just a little bit from my report. So, the neighborhood's is primarily a one story context. Located within the central San Gabriel Planning District requires additional scrutiny. The City of San Gabriel Historic Preservation Program supports the maintenance of historic integrity and character, and proposed projects in identified planning districts provide an opportunity to return, to support a return to greater integrity through sensitive design, one project at a time, so that eligibility for designation as a historic district and therefore access to historic preservation incentives may be possible in the future. Neighborhood character and setting should be, should guide compatibility in size, scale, style, and simplicity. Low profile, one story, fairly constrained footprints. The proposal should be thoughtfully designed to fit within the historic neighborhood and inspired by period counterparts with simply expressed modernly executed features and materials that are period compatible, scaled, and patterned.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. The applicant's here?
The applicant is here, yes.
Good evening.
Chair Romo, Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Chen. My name is Danny Tang and I'm here with my wife, Juwi Tang. We want to begin to be sincerely thank you for your time and your service to the city of San Gabriel. As someone who recently appointed as the plan commission myself, I understand firsthand of serving our community in a meaningful way is to give back. I truly appreciate the dedication the board bring to maintain the city character and design quality to the neighborhood. A little bit about, a little bit about me, I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of California. I have worked as a plant check engineer. I work at the design architecture firm and engineering firms in the past year where I helped, came up with this experience that I have. I've helped many family in the San Gabriel Valley, Alhambra, Rosemead, Temple City, including San Gabriel to build, design a lot of the houses and build a lot of them as well. I understand the process from both homeowner perspective and from professional side of planning and constructions. This city is where I want to build my dream home. I was fortunate enough to obtain this lot. This lot, as you know, that it's been sitting there for years. It's been undeveloped and demolished for the last twenty-seven years. You know, my wife and I invested our life-saving plus more into this project to build our dream home. Into this project is not pro, not pro profit, but to crave forever home here in San Gabriel. This is about family stability and community. And I want to say that every step we've, we've taken has been respect, respect with city rule, design guideline, design standard, and the vision of the neighborhood. I want to also take a quick moment to recognize the planning staff, especially Samantha and Marlon has been helping out this whole ten month process and I submit the plan. I think combined, I meet with them over twenty times back and forth. I also met with Ron, city architect, and also got two common review. And I'll go a little bit over that, that I think I made a lot of the changes. So, tonight, I really want to focus on the three requests regarding my residential projects. Each reflect broader challenges to many homeowner in city of San Gabriel. My goal is not to seek resolution just for my projects, but also to highlight the opportunity for a process that fair, more consistent, and more efficient for everyone involved. This is a little unique because I am myself, the design, the engineer, the builder, and the homeowner of this, of this project. So, I do, you know, ask question and challenge a couple of idea which I disagree with, but in a very respectful way as well. And I'll, I'll go over that. So, my first request for approval, as earlier Marlon stated, with a project where the second driveway facing Sunset Street, currently, there is a driveway on Euclid where that will be converted to an ADU. So, that driveway is specifically more for that ADU conversions for me because I see Sunset, there is no driveway in that particular lot where every lot has a driveway. And I thought this might be a good opportunity if I can have a second driveway for a couple reason that I will state it. The first reason why I think I'm asking for the second driveway is improve the off-street parking from both household, reducing the, the street parking and the congestion to the street. Secondly, is support street, city street clean effort to minimize car blocking on the street during street cleaning day. Also, it enhance safety and conveniency for us when we, you know, like do the grocery or, you know, moving furniture. We have three kids. Sometime they sleeping, just carry them right there to the door. It'll be, and also, it's a lot more safer than just opening a door on the street and try to carry them in. And it's just, you know, especially during the weather and nighttime, et cetera. So, that was the reason why I asked for that. I think this is common and reasonable solution for, especially this is a corner lot, have both street, want to align with the sound planning principle such as other city, you know, nearby cities, City of Rosemead, Alhambra, LA County, for routine approval, similar configurations. The second assumption that I'm asking is, my second request is the concern with city requirement for STEM licensed landscape architect for standard residential home. After reviewing city policy compared with the neighbor jurisdictions, I found that our city is unique in this requirement for residential home. Most of other city in the region include Rosemead, Alhambra, City of LA, LA County, do not have the required of landscape architect STEM even for two story. Just to put this in perspective, in the state of California, we don't require a licensed architect to design two story home for residential housing. Yet, you know, our city require land, licensed landscape architect for residential home. This is much higher and unusual threshold, create unnecessary cost, delay. I reached out to get quote from various landscape architect. It costs as high as five thousand dollars just for the landscape architect. And that doesn't include the additional time spent, repeat review, coordinations. And they also did mention that our city for landscape and residential is tougher than others. So, in, in my case, I already coordinated with the, the planning staff. We did look at the approved list of city tree that were allowed as a native to our city. I selected those tree. And also, I ensured the full compliance with city standard in term of the tree, number of tree, the area of the landscape. Additionally, in the rear, as city architect mentioned, in the rear of it, that was the second part that I brought up. I was transparent about it. That part, it was the SB nine aspect, which is going to be lost, lot divisions in the future. So, while I support the city goal for quality landscaping, this requirement plays significant unnecessary burden for our, for family trying to build, improve their home. I respect the request of the commissioner to consider examine the standard residential requirement for landscape architect. Lastly, lastly, my concern with the consultant city architect review process. I fully recognize the value, importance of the design oversight. It play a key role in maintaining San Gabriel aesthetic standard. However, in my case, the process has become repetitive, subjective, inconsistency, bias compared to recent approved project as well. So, all the zoning and standard development have been met. Aside from the second driveway that I request earlier, I met every aspect of the zoning aspect. Despite the city architect had issued multiple round of comment, which is some case I, I don't agree. And I'll go over that with, with the just want to, literally what I mentioned earlier, we did have two round, about three round of comments, meet with the virtual meeting. And from the original that I designed, based on what was recommended, I had to throw the old design away. And I thought I incorporate what was asked into the design. And it came back with more revisions than the first one. And now I have to scrape it off and redesign again. I think that's unjust and unfair. If you have, i- if you can go to the PDF page fifty-eight of, and, and I'll guide you through city engineer red mark. And so, on the PDF page fifty-eight on sheet A two dash one, so a couple of recommendations would point out. So, the city architect recommend to push back the, my frontage to create a porch in the porch entry in the front and added four columns on there. So, what I did, I did push that back. And instead of four column, I added two column, but because I think is, the four column was too excessive. Also, the, some of the window, so some of the window originally was a big side windows. I think it's a four feet width. But the city architect recommended to break up into two, two smaller window, which I did in place where I can. I, I also mentioned that is when you break out to small window at the bedroom, you have problem with building safety later because it's an egress window where you need a minimum width and height to exit where to escape fire and other emergency. But even though that, because I was planning to have just a one window per bedroom only, now we have three window because I still need one to be escape egress, or else building safety and fire department will not let me pass that aspect. If you go on the second page fifty-nine of the PDF, the city architect red marked a couple item here on sheet A two point one. He asked, he kind of redraw my interior layout, which I think the imposed of the revision of interior layout is not within the city architect purview. It should be just the exterior part of it. But even though I still trying to adjust to as much as I can, and also added the bay window that was recommended, and I did that also. And on the next page sixty of the PDF on sheet A three point two, it would recommend the eve to be changed on eighteen, from eighteen to twenty-four inches, which I changed it to twenty, twenty-four inches, direct to six inch to twelve inch, which I did change to twelve inches. Bay window to be added. Create a gable porch form. I didn't do the gable form. I didn't do the, I didn't do the gable porch at the first story. I mean, in, in the front entrance. The reason is because the, I changed the roof layout to be hip-like, a hip style to match with the neighborhood. And so, my front, my, my, my porch entrance had a similar hip layout as well, just to match with that. so I think what was stated earlier was incorrect. I made a lot of changes. And from the revisions, I have to, it's, it's a domino effect. When you change something, especially with a two story, with a limit amount of square foot I can do, I have to scrape off that whole design, restart all over again. And I thought I really did implement at least ninety percent of what the city architect recommended. It came back with another slap in the face of changing the whole thing again. And it's just, I think it's just being biased and it's, it's not consistent and it's, it's not black and white. So, my apology. You know, city architect asked to have all the window to remain similar, same size. I tried to do as much as possible, but knowing that the bathroom window have to be a little higher, a little smaller. The bedroom, I have to have at least one, one, one window that's enough for the egress. The stair, I need that window to stare for natural light coming in. And in the virtual meeting where the city, city architect asked me to design a house like a one story, like craftsmen, which really kind of, really boil what, what I designed, you know, my whole life saving to build a dream home. And I cannot just do a brand new two story house like a craftsman style. That is not something that I like And just for clarifications on a couple item on the staff report that was incorrect as well, and I want to go over that with you as well. So, you know, Marlon was out for about a month or so, and there was some coordination between me and Samantha with some revisions. But I know it wasn't updated because Marlon was out for a while. But I know it wasn't updated because Marlin was out for a while. And I want to point out a couple things that is incorrect and inconsistent with you, to you. On the PF, on the second page, on the first paragraph on the top where, I think third to the last of the paragraph, where they said it submit material was uncomplete. Landscape plan, which I asked for the exemption for earlier. The material board has not been provided. I provided, I just provided this morning. So it's not a staff fault. It's, I totally missed that. I didn't know about it until last week. And then I promised to have that board material here to show to you guys. Go on with the city architect has found the design of the proposed home to be inconsistent with the design guideline, siding excessive pavement, meaning that where the driveway that I requested on sunset for the main house, double door entry, he wanted single door. To us is when we build this size of house, I like to have double door is because it's Feng Shui. We like to have big door, bring good energy into the home. And within the same block, not just the same block at, on that street, there are four home. The four reason newly, the most newest home and two-story all have double doors. And the thing happened, double door is really matching with the, with the neighborhood and within that, that same block. And if you go drive around, I mean, sorry, and I drive around St. April, all the two-story, I'll say ninety-five percent of them have double door. And I feel like I already created that porch look like to have that single-story type of entry. And I feel like because my lot is wider than other lot, it's sixty feet wide where most of the lot in the city is fifty feet wide. And I feel that matched nicely, it blended in nicely with the design. Also, lack of detail substance. I have no idea what is lack of detail substance. I thought I incorporated those item in terms of the eve, the window, the porch, the patio, I thought I did that. And I don't know why it's still there. And the large mass, mentioned the last part of it, large mass of the outscale with other home found in the neighborhood. So when this was large mass is before Marlin left, he did the calculation. He thought that my second story is more than seventy-five percent of the first story, the story. But after the discussion, it's realized that it is under that seventy-five percent zoning code. So it matched with the design guideline. And I think it was written there is because this was prior to the discussion. And it was, so I want to point that out. In the second part of under city architect review on the same page two of the PF, in the second sentence, the city architect stated recommend to include provide porch that is consistent with those found in the surround neighborhood and set back the second story mass to more generally introduce into primary single point home. And I thought I did that with the porch, with the second floor set back a little bit. So I don't know why it's still there. The city architect also found the proposed lack of sense of detail substance. I have no idea what he want specifically. What is it that you want in term of detail and substance? I thought I did that again. The large concrete driveway in front yard eliminate any sense of transition between the public sidewalk and front door of the home. The city architect find the home to lack character and recommend substance redesign the neighborhood context in mind. Again, is that driveway that I requested. I meet all the requirement, it's just that driveway, specifically driveway, that is not per zoning code. Because per zoning code stated on the board report that is, is only forty-two inches, but that's for walkway and. So I would like to just have a closing remark and thank you for taking your time to listen to this. I want to emphasize that my goal is to work, collaborate with the city. I fully support St. Gabriel commitment for high quality design. But I also believe the process should be balanced, transparent, efficient and consistent with neighborhood junction by addressing these three issues that I requested. The landscape architect requirement, the repeat city architect review and the second driveway request. The commissioner can help make a process clear and more manageable for resident who will follow the rule, invest in the community and striving to build home that respect city visions. I thank you for your time, your service and your thoughtful consideration. My wife and I are happy to answer any question, provide additional document to assist with your review. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cheng, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I, first of all, I want you to understand that I hear what your presentation is. And I also heard the city architects comment about that particular location. Let me ask you a couple of quick questions. Is this intended to be your own home?
Yes, yes.
You will live there?
We will live there.
Okay. So, but you want to live in the front portion and then the ADU attached? Is that you're going to be lived by your also?
My parents.
That's fine. All right, so.
Right now is either to my parent and if they do pass away or in the future, we might rent it out to help offset with.
Okay. That's, it's not the purview of the design review commission. But I, the reason why this commission even exists is because you choose to live in St. Gabriel because you must love the city, you like the city. There are certain thing in the city that you want to bring you in, so you want to live here. So what is it? Is the character of the architecture?
I have three kids, the school is great.
That's, I know, you will let me finish.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I thought you asked me a question.
So you, you love something and you decided to move here yourself?
Yes.
What is education, is the way the city is, the landscaping, all the architecture, how the city work? It's all these characters that bring you into the city, want to be part of the city. The commission was created by the city father to protect those quality. So the reason why this commission even exist, I served in the commission for over twenty years in this city. So I love this city also. We do that, I've seen a lot of different drawings coming in. We, we gone through many plans, approvals, drawings, characters and of these different style building. We all coming in. You're fortunate that most of the St. Gabriel citizen have the support and of our planning staff, the consultant city architect and the consulting city landscape architect to walk them through, to help them for the whole design process. So that by the time it come to us, it's ninety-five percent recommend approval. Some maybe one or two continuance to finalize some missing detail. But hardly, I asked a question earlier about why would they recommend denial? And when we looked at the plan, when I looked at the plan at home, I realized that they did what they have to do. And because it is not something that the St. Gabriel design guideline would encourage. I'll share just a couple of big one with you. It's the, the overall volume of the house. You have a ten-foot ceiling first floor?
Yes.
You have a ten-foot ceiling second floor or nine-foot?
The first floor is ten feet, the second floor is nine feet.
Right. So, so it's, you're pushing the height to basically as high as you can. We, you know, most older homes are about eight-foot ceiling. Sometimes we accept nine-foot in the first floor, but the second floor never pushes up to nine feet. So, so you pick up a couple of feet there. Then, then you, you basically try to push as much volume in that, in the tight footage, meaning that just that, just a big building all kind of packed together. And which is contrary to what the city allowing that area, that they want to maintain some of the character that were there. So, so that make it very difficult to swallow. Because once the thing is built per your design at this point, it will, it will stick up like a sore thumb. People will drive by and say, how did this get here? It become very incompatible. I know it's not black and white. Incompatibility, it's very hard to define. But if you drive around an area that no home sticks out, and that's a good design home, because they all working together. But if you drive around, you see one huge home over four existing smaller homes and they totally out of character and the landscaping is not there, then you can see it right away. This is a design review meeting, not a design meeting. We, we don't have enough time to go through all your program and try to help you to design your home. We, we were planning on having city staff and the consultant to help the applicant to go through that correctly, so we can get it done. I guess what I want to share with you is this. If you can determine the style of your home that you like, try to stay with that style. There is no particular style that I can see. You just put a box and put a few windows where you like and, and put a tile roof and cover it down. If everyone does that, it will fail. It will, it will defeat the whole reason that the design review commission are created. We, we all volunteers. We, we, we work for nothing. We spending our time, understand your building, working with city staff, working with city architect and try to protect the character of the city and try to make something will be so beautiful that people want to move in. That's our job. So I hope you get something out of my conversation that once you determine the style, stay with that style, understand the detail of that style, work that full plan that you like within that style. And we have a lot of approvable project that you can drive around and see and they came out beautiful. So I guess that would be the right way to do it. I, it appears to me that you, you would even accept the, the recommendation of denial, trying to have this opportunity. So I appreciate that. I want to give you my twenty-something years experience sitting in this design review commission and try to help you to get through with a beautiful home, a home of your choice that you can live here happily ever. But what you see here by fighting city staff and fighting the city architect and the landscape architect is not going to help you to get to where you want. So Chair, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, just a few quick comments. As my fellow commissioner was stating, we're all volunteers here. And we all live here and we want to, we volunteer time and not because we have nothing else to do, but because we want to keep the character of the city. Because we like the city, we like to look. And obviously you do as well, since you want to move into St. Gabriel as well. I think maybe the miscommunication has become where, or began when perhaps when you bought the lot, were you aware of the, of the design desires or, or design guidelines made by the city?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to answer that. So I did look up at the website, there's no historical that implemented at resident. And I drove around the neighborhood, there's around like twenty, thirty houses or likes, I feel like it's similar to what I'm, I designed. So that's why I thought what my design was compatible with all those new home that was built. And I saw some of the one that are approved recently with the city also with like the two-door. The reason is the one that, you know, the, the board approved with the two-door was not too long ago, early this year. I mean, I can get the planning case up. And I thought a lot of my design is compatible. And I don't know. I'm not trying to be stand out.
No, I understand, but I think you said a key thing, my view. In a city, it's many people's view. It's not just a certain view. In my experience, the city architect is, is very knowledgeable on what the city is looking for as far as nuances of aesthetics and construction, things like that. So your view of, of your house, you may view it as compatible, does not necessarily mean that in other people's view it is. Where there's no, we're not trying to restrict you like my fellow commissioner said as to the design. You go with the design, you try to stick to that design and you make the alterations or, or whatever have you. But when you reach this point, we really would like to see something that has been through, through several opinions, if you want to put it that way. As far as part of our purview and responsibility is also the aesthetic as far as the greenery and things of that sort, to make sure that neighbors within the neighborhood, be it whatever demographic they're, they pertain to, it's pleasant to view and they feel proud to be in that, in that area.
Yeah.
And I, I'll be honest with you, it looks monolithic to me.
Sorry, what's that?
Monolithic to me. It looks like, like, like a box. And I was reading some of the, the comments and that you also put, I understand what you want to achieve, but you also have to understand in the area you're in. And the, the, the goals of the city as a whole and as a community. You mentioned some things about the landscaping and things like that. And you don't understand or you don't believe that there should be this much review or purview of a design commission or something along those lines. And perhaps other cities don't find the need for it, St. Gabriel does. And the St. Gabriel community does. So it, I'm not being, I'm trying to be obstinate about it, but I think it would be, it would be beneficial for your project if you encompassed all these, all these nuances into your project. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. In preparation for this meeting, I read here every letter, the whole.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, the staff report, studied the designs. I also looked at the city's website and looked at the design guidelines. So the design guidelines were approved by the city council in two thousand and three and amended in two thousand and ten. Raymond was on the design commission way back then. And his name is on the document. But there are a couple of things. I'm going to read to you just three different snippets. It starts off saying that the city council has made a commitment. commitment to the, to good design with the realization that each project can be expected to influence our environment for a long time. My house, built in nineteen thirty-one. The houses in your neighborhood, this older than that, they've been there a long time. This body reviews single family homes because of bad single family homes that were built. That's why we look at single family homes. Before, they didn't have to look at single family homes, but now they look at single family homes. On page three of the design guidelines, it says the purpose. It says, and this is exactly a comment in response to what you are saying, zoning sets, minimum regulations. The design guidelines seek to improve the level of design quality by focusing on important design principle. Meaning, when you do something just by code and as an engineer, you have to do things by calculations. It's more of a science. But this, our design guidelines, they have pictures of what we want to see in San Gabriel and then they have pictures of what we don't want to see. And I think that's a very important document on the city's website that will help enlighten you to address these things. And the, the third part, and I just have one more thing after this, is that the design standards and guidelines are meant to encourage projects that accommodate the user while contributing to an attractive environment. Perspective for content, for content is central. So, when you look at what's across the street, what are the, the two houses that are abutting this property? Now, you're a corner, on a corner, so you have three houses that are directly across the street. That's all part of this contextual design. How does your house fit in the, in that corner? And on page nineteen, this is something, it talks about landscaping on, in the city's guide, design guidelines, not in your, not in the packet. It says that landscape, landscaping is described as an art, not a science. So, how you put things, how things are curated together, the landscaping and knowing how things are watered. Our last meeting was two hours and we were talking about trees. That's the only thing, one project, just talking about trees. We take landscaping extremely, it's extremely important, preserving trees, how are trees going to be added, how, what are, what's the plant material, permeable surfaces. We want to make sure that the city code, that the city council has adopted. We're not here to, to say, oh, the city council wants this, but we want something else. No, we're here to do the design work as per the rules set up by the city council. So, my request to you is that you look at those San Gabriel design guidelines, you really look at them, you have the comments and you put those things together. I think it's important you're investing in our, in the San Gabriel community and we want to make sure that that investment is good for you and for your neighbors. And that's something that we take very, very much to heart. At this time, I'd like to see if there, if we have any public comment. We do have one letter that I think we all read already. Do we have any other, other public comments on this project?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. It is now seven forty-five and I'm going to close the public comment period on this project and it's up to our commission to deliberate. If you can please sit down, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cheng?
Yeah, I, you know, reading the letter of support, I, I can just see that sometimes it's, it's more of the frustration of the process. How do we get to a, a provable project and how do we get to a, a project that, that everybody would appreciate at the end? Maybe this is a quick question for staff. Do we really require a landscape architect, licensed landscape architect for all the residential development?
Yes, eventually during plan check because of certification requirements by the state, at least at that point in time, calculation for water usage and drainage, there is a requirement that a licensed professional sign.
So, eventually they would need to get to a landscape architect because of the new water conservation calculation. I guess the applicant, very earlier, I think a lot of times you've seen project that work with arbores and, and other qualified landscape people, they can get through all of that, but ultimately they're going to need that when they go to the drawing anyway. So, it's, it's, it's kind of unfortunate that, that all this effort has put in and we're not getting the final result that we like to see. I hope that the, Chair, I don't know whether you want to possibly entertain a, a continuance for the applicant to, or staff to redesign it so that they do not lose the, the entire open case, that they come back maybe with a, a date not certain, that they can take their time to revisit it and rebuild it. If this is truly their own home, they'd like to build, I think it's worth the consideration. So, I would, I would say that I would support a continuance if the applicant would agree to it before denial, but I cannot approve it the way it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
I, I agree if the applicant is, is, is willing to, to continue it, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do it and especially if it saves the applicant fees as it seems to be a, a, a concern. I, I, I would hope that the applicant puts some of the, these things aside and really works with the, the staff that we have in the city to, to, to get to a point where they, they come to make a presentation and, and, you know, get, get it approved.
Thank you. You know, in doing my research for this, I also looked at one city in particular, Temple City, who was listed as a city that doesn't require a landscape architect. That is an erroneous statement from the applicant and haven't checked El Hambrano or Rosemead, but, you know, we work for what our city council has put into place. And regardless, you know, Pasadena, yeah, David, you worked for Pasadena. Yeah, Pasadena, their design staff denies most projects. Before coming, yeah, they have most of their projects, you know, we need to deny it, change it, you know. So, every city is a little different. I would like to see if the applicant, if they're willing to continue, we can continue to a date uncertain, look at the design guidelines, ask questions. If you don't understand what our architect and staff are telling you, you work with architects, see if an architect will help you address the things of being, that are being asked of you. That makes a big difference and it's going to make a big difference to how your home looks, how it feels, your pride in it and your neighbors. Like I said, our last meeting was over two hours, one project, mostly trees and trying to deal with the neighbors and trying to, to find a balance. On this, the neighbors aren't here to discuss anything, but we're here representing what the city council has directed us to do. So, if there is a motion to continue this and then it'll be up to the applicant if he wants to continue or not move forward, that'll be up to, up to the applicant. I'm looking at my fellow commissioners. Or else I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
I move to continued planning case number SPR twenty-five dash zero-one-two, site plan review to a date uncertain. And I hope the applicant had reviewed the, the staff report, all the consultants' report and the feedback that these commissioners have given him, that they will accept that continuance and rework the project to something that is approvable.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Two is absent. Vice Chair Say Low is absent. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three A's, motion passes for continuance to a date uncertain.
Thank you and good luck, sir. Marlin, do you have a report on the score?
Five.
Okay. He's working on that?
Five-four, top of the seventh. Dodgers are down.
All right. Now we go to the last item of this evening, item C one-one-five, East Valley Boulevard, planning case number PPD two-two-zero-one-one, precise plan of design, applicant Alex Lai. And Samantha, you'll be doing this presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Design Review Commission. The subject property is located on the north side of East Valley Boulevard, south of the Rubio Wash. The subject property is comprised of two adjoining parcels and the two lots combined will equate to approximately a thirty-eight thousand square foot size property, which is a little bit under an acre in size. And the lot is trapezoid in shape. The western parcel contains automotive repair uses within two commercial buildings, approximately thirty-five hundred square feet. The property also includes an open metal canopy structure, again for auto-related type uses, which is located at the northwestern portion of the site within the red outline that is on the slide. And the existing property predominantly has landscape open space existing, which is represented by the green on the map. The zoning of the property is a mixed-use corridor within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area and neighboring properties include other mixed-use corridor lots to the east-west and the city of Rosemead to the north and south and again, as mentioned, the Rubio Wash to the north. The proposed project, it's a sixty-five unit mixed-use project, mixed-use with five lift work units on the ground floor, followed by residential uses on the subsequent levels. This is sixty-five units with six affordable low-income housing. The proposed project includes requests for incentives and concessions and waivers for floor area ratio, lot coverage, height, number of stories, the rear setback and parking. Additionally, the project includes a subdivision map for the subdivision of air rights, a density bonus request and an affordable housing agreement, which all were reviewed by the Planning Commission earlier this month on October thirteenth and approval was granted by the Planning Commission. The proposed project, the general plan does allow for a mixed-use development within the commercial specific plan area and the proposed project would meet the general plan goals and objectives within the land use element, housing, economic development and community design goals. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the project was determined to be exempt per guidelines one-five-three-three-two, class thirty-two for infield development. And again, this was a part of the Planning Commission's review. The application was noticed to surrounding properties within the radius, both through mail, posting on the site as well as publication within the San Gabriel Sun and the agenda was posted at City Hall, the post office and the public library. The recommendation before the Design Review Commission this evening is to adopt the attached resolution of the Design Review Commission of the city of San Gabriel approving planning case number PPD twenty-two dash zero-one-one for the precise plan of design to allow for a mixed-use development at one-one-zero-five East Valley Boulevard. Subject to the recommended conditions, staff was a little light on going over the design aspects of the building. It is a contemporary design. However, the project architect, as well as the landscape architect for the development team is present this evening. They do have a couple of slides that they would like to present to the commission. This concludes staff's presentation and again, the development team is present for their presentation as well as for questions and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the applicant, are there any questions for staff?
No, I don't.
Mr. Lopez?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions either. So, the applicant, if you can come forward for your
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Lai. I'm the applicant behind the All Valley LLC project. My history goes back maybe thirty years. My family started a development office in nineteen ninety-five. Over this course of thirty years, we've completed sixteen projects totaling over hundreds of units. We've done most of our projects, more than half in the city of Monterey Park, the remaining in neighboring cities like Arcadia, Temple City and El Monte. Unfortunately, we've never built in San Gabriel, so this brings us to San Gabriel. I think we're honored to be here today and this project brings, you know, more units, more affordable housing into the city. Just a final note, this is the third affordable housing project we have. The other two were in Monterey Park and Temple City. The Temple City one is actually about to break around within a month's time, we just confirmed. I'm here for any questions and I have my team here as well, Stephen Chen with Tag Design Works, I have Rose Sally with the landscape architect and I have counsel as well too. If there's anything I can't answer, he's here as well.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. This is Stephen Chen. Thank you for having us here. First of all, I just thank the, the staff, Samantha, for helping us go through this whole night. It's very, very lengthy process, but we're almost there. And also thank you, city architect, for helping us going through this design review. He's very patient with us going back and forth on these minor tweak details to make this project even beautiful. Again, coming back to this presentation, really just, you have the package that showing the, the design for the architectural part, but I think we, we, we need to emphasize a little bit on the landscape design just because our landscape architects spend a lot of time trying to make this project, a lot of landscape area, outdoor space, how to use on the second, I mean, on the upper floor and the lower floor for the outdoor usage. So, on the first slide, it shows the ground floor, outdoor space, two or three back. Again, this is, this project's designed on a trapezoid lot. We have a lot of angle lots that we cannot really have a good use for that, but using that triangle space as a landscape architect, and landscape area and outdoor space is really a good use for that. Also, we can fit. Also, we can fit a hammerhead turnaround for the fires, truck to go through during the emergency. Most likely, 99.99%, we're not going to use that area for the fire trucks, so that 99.99% of the time, we're going to use for, as outdoor space for the kids or for the people walking around, and we do have a little picnic area for the barbecue stations that we can use. So that become a great outdoor space and also create buffer between our building to the neighboring building, which is a commercial building. We do have a 2.5-story high CMU wall over there that we're just, we're facing right now, so hopefully that buffer will give a very good buffer zone between the residential and the commercial building. Next slide, please. So this slide is focusing on the, the upper patio area that providing more outdoor space on the residential side. This has a multi-function outdoor space with a sitting area, the playground for the lawns, you can have a pass over there, it's almost like a pass playground, and also a, a covered trailer's patio that you could use for a sitting area during the daytime or nighttime. So that, that provide more a social area for the resident in this facilities, something that you don't need to go down, or you can just using that to, to the daytime or nighttime usage. So that, that create a lot of open space for this project besides the other private balcony that we have for each unit. So that conclude these outdoor space and the more focusing on the landscape design. I'm not sure if you have anything.
Good evening, my name is Ross Ali, and I'm the landscape architect for this project. We went back and forth with the city landscape architect in terms of making corrections to the plans. So obviously, you know, we're meeting all the ordinance in terms of water consumption, retention. So also for the frontage, you know, we're going to try to beautify the frontage by adding planting areas, seating areas, a few side amenities, bicycle racks. So in terms of landscape, I believe that we are proposing a good project, and I believe one that the city already has looked at plenty of times and approved, so.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Friedman with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler Mitchell. I'm counsel, I'm here if there's any questions when it comes to density bonus projects, or sometimes some limited discretion available for design review projects. I know there's been a lot of effort put into this design already, I suspect there won't be any issues. If you do have any questions, I'm available. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang, do you have questions?
I was going to ask maybe staff or even the developer can answer. This is meant to be a condominium project?
Yes, there is a subdivision map that is associated with this project.
I see, has that gone to?
The Planning Commission, too.
Already approved? I see, I got it, thank you. That's all I needed to know, thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant?
No, I, this is still for the applicant, right?
Yes.
No, I, I think it's very clear, they did a decent job of putting it all together. Everything we need to have is already there, so I don't have any question.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
No questions for the applicant, thank you.
I actually have questions. Landscape architects. I noticed in the plans, you have the Four London Plains.
On the street side?
Street trees. So, just for your team, if they could show those instead of palm trees, that would be, that would have been nice.
On the elevations, correct, okay, yeah.
But the, the other thing is that there is street parking that's there on Valley Boulevard, and you have kind of a parkway along with the trees with plant materials.
Correct.
And if you have parking there on the street and plant materials that aren't turf or other low-stepping things, they get ugly after a while, or it becomes a hazard for people trying to exit their car or go to, go to the, the development site. So that's one of the things that I'm, not only for this project, but for other projects, I definitely look at things like that, want to look at the user-friendliness of the development. So that's something that I'd like to recommend.
So you prefer to, a, a, a lot of the plant material that we're going to have in, in the front is going to be lower plant material, low maintenance, but...
But if you, stepping, because people are going to be stepping.
Yeah, typically, we can propose, when you step out of the car, maybe have 12 inches of hardscape, maybe a continuous concrete.
Yeah.
And that way, when they step out of the car, they're stepping into a flat surface. So yeah, definitely, we can propose that.
So that's something that, that I really look at projects and making sure that that's something.
Yeah, it's kind of what we do on, you know, on parking lot structures, where you have a finger close to a, a parking lot.
Yes, yeah.
We add an additional, maybe 12 inches of concrete, you know, to the curb.
Right.
So that way, when you step out, you're stepping into the concrete pad.
All right. And that's something that you can work with our landscape architect, and we don't have to, you know.
Right.
Needle, needle it right now.
I'll make a note of that.
All right, thank you. And then, just either for Alex or your architect, who do you see being in those ground floor live-work units that you're proposing?
So, I, I think when we were designing this project, we were looking at kind of where the location was, and we were kind of more on the borderline of San Gabriel and Rosemead. So we felt that if you put commercial there, it wasn't really necessarily the best walk-friendly location, but next door you have Gold World Plaza with lots of, you know, offices, restaurants, you know, retail there as well, so we were thinking, you know, for a live-work space, it could be physical therapists, it could be some sort of medical, you know, someone that wants to have their office downstairs and go upstairs, you know, at night to sleep, but, you know, I guess, at this point, that, that's kind of the, the tenants or the renters that we kind of see fitting for the live-work units, but it could be, you know, e-commerce, you know, online businesses and so forth, and they just want some small retail presence. So it's flexible, in my opinion, you know, to who we want to cater to.
Yeah.
And, and there's only five of those, so it's like, there's very limited.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that sense.
And my background is in economic development.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I realize that getting prime retailers, it's, it's not going to happen, but you do have a lot of, you know, the, the retail front glass space, and so I was around the community these last couple of days, I noticed a storefront on Lastuna Drive where it's an, it's an artist workshop area, and the artist has like sheets in front to kind of block the pedestrian view and the vehicular view of what's going on inside. So I'd like to maybe propose that you work with our city architect to, to look at how best to utilize that storefront space. Because maybe it's opaque glass, maybe it's something different, but when you have someone, either an artist or, or someone who has some type of a, an internet business, they don't necessarily need that storefront space, but it's something that, when planning for it, you, we want you to be successful.
Yes.
And your potential people who are going to be there, either it's a commercial condo or however that arrangement is going to be there for those front spaces, that that is successful. So I'm going to, you know, look at maybe you working with Ron to try to noodle that.
Sure.
Knowing that you're not going to have a dress shop, a toy store, or anything like that, so you possibly don't need all of that glass that's opaque and you can see inside.
Okay.
But I like the doors, I like tho, those types of features. I think you're working on building a walkable environment, and I think that's where, you know, for your residents to come out and be within the community, to enjoy what's around, walking distance on Valley Boulevard, you want those types of things, and the landscaping there to beautify the area and make it more user-friendly.
Right.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Then... That took forever.
I'm currently working on a project in Granada Hills, city of Los Angeles, same kind of concerns that you've just raised, so I, I know what you're talking about. I, I did have the opportunity to review this project, I think, five times. I think it was a good project to start, it had several program changes along the way, and, but I made many recommendations, and they accepted all these recommendations to improve the project. In particular, the landscape I was concerned about, and originally, there was one existing Queen Palm, and they were proposing adding three more, but I thought that that was not one of the allowed trees on this, so I recommended to discuss with Public Works and city landscape architects, so I think that's been rectified. So I, I think it's a very good project.
Thank you, Ron. Sorry, Sam. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
All right. It is 8:12, and the time for public comment on this project is now closed. It is our turn to deliberate, and I'll start with Commissioner Chang, our architect, on staff.
Now, it is, it's going to be a nice project when it's all said and done. It's challenging because of the configuration of the lot, but at the end, it, it will turn out to be a very interesting project, understanding the color scheme is pretty much all this gray, white, and then those three color work as a good punch on, in the right location, and I think it's going to be, when people identify the building, they're going to say, oh, that red, yellow, and green, the blue building, and they're going to identify that because it does have its own character. I think, I think they turned that little design element into something that will identify the project well. But the, the overall design was fine, the site planning was done right, and so I have no problem approving the project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I like the project, I, I thank you, that color scheme they, they've chosen bodes well in that area. So I, I, I'm ready to move.
You've heard my comments, I support my commissioners, and I actually look forward to seeing what you propose for public art and your sign pro, signage program, because that's something that can definitely work to enhance your project as well. So with that, if there's a motion to approve?
Yeah, I motion to approve planning case number PPD 22011 with the suggestions and recommendations to work with the city architect.
And the landscape architect.
And the landscape architect, yes.
Yes, all right.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Two is absent, Vice Chair Seale Low is absent, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three As, motion passes.
Congratulations. We still have a little bit more of our meeting left, so do we have comments from our planning manager?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have comments or any reports from any fellow commissioners?
No, there isn't. I just want to verify that the next meeting in November is what date? I may missed it, so when, when is it going to be?
November 24.
I will still be out of country, so I will miss the next meeting, I just want to share that with you.
Yes, we'll make a note of that, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'm no comment, nothing to report.
All right. Then I am adjourning this meeting, because I don't have any comments in either besides welcoming our new community development chair, I mean, not chair, director. And we are adjourning to our next regular meeting, November 24, and hopefully we will have at least one more member of our commission here, or else we won't have a quorum. That will be at 6:30 here at City Council Chamber, please. Thank you.